If you would please.
There you go.
Yep, Commissioner.
All right. We have a couple of amendments to the agenda. Talking about some staffing and also talking about contract with, for Jennifer. Other than that, our agenda is the same.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then Commissioner Huff is watching on YouTube. If he needs to be present for anything, we'll hit him on the phone. All right, first off, we need to go into the board of amends.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into the Board of Amends.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's just, a couple reimbursement claims, refunds.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to go back out. Motion to go back out.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we exit the Board of Amends.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Accounts payable, we have credit card reports, a regular Commissioner's report, an elections report, a Blue Cross report, and a jury report.
Yep. Do you have any issues with any of them?
Uh, I just had a question. And it was on Wood Court. What is Wood Court, actually?
Treatment Court.
Treatment Court. So what is the drug court?
Uh, no, drug court is separate from Wood Court, but it's another treatment court.
Treatment Court, okay. We pay $5,000 to City of Pocatello for gym access.
For the participants?
Participants in Wood Court.
$5,000 per year, per month?
Per year. It's something I hadn't seen before. And I went down and talked to auditing, and they said it's an annual fee.
Is it, where's the gym at, is it?
It's Pocatello Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation.
We should probably look into that.
I don't know a whole lot about it, but.
I know that they.
I went and talked to auditing, and we pay $5,000 for gym access for Wood Court. On an annual basis.
Mm-hmm. And I, I don't know which it is. Kristy is gonna be here. Steve had an MRI this morning, but she's on her way. So if you want to wait, you can ask her for sure.
I, I went down and talked to her staff, and they showed me the bill. It just, some of these things show up, not $5,000 for gym membership.
I know there's usually participant fees. I don't know if those are being used or not to cover for that. Right, I don't know either for sure. But you can ask her for sure how, how that's paid.
And out of all of them, that's the only one I really had questions on.
Do you want to wait on that one, or do you want to just approve them?
Approve it, those are in the budget.
We, we approve it, and then we have a conversation about it.
Okay. So you're good with all of this stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all these reports as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
I said aye.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I just quietly.
Okay. I only heard my own. That doesn't work. And with that, we have our regular invoices.
Any concerns? On your end?
Uh-huh. No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the invoices as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Did I sign these two?
Yeah, just, anyway. At least two signatures on them. All right. Next, we have salary rate approval forms.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are we supposed to sign this one?
Thank you. And we also have a credit application. Seems like we're signing a lot of credit applications here lately. This is for the landfill, it looks like. What's on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the credit application as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right.
Clinton?
Yeah. Come on up.
I'm, uh, Clinton Pagnato. And I'm the owner of the Blue Moon Bar and Grill in Lava Hot Springs. And in March, we had a roof collapse due to a snow load. And, sorry, I just ran up the stairs. I'm just requesting, asking some aid, if possible, with the county's resources, to help out with some of the dump expenses from the demolition of the building. If that was at all possible. And if you guys had any other resources as far as emergency funds go, that you know the county or the state may provide due to the circumstances. I'm still, um, out of work, and so are my employees, and we're trying to keep the ball rolling here. It's been a very tedious and painful process. And I was just wondering what your guys' thoughts were on the subject.
Well, a couple of questions. Because we have people come and ask to dump in the landfill. You're just asking to dump, you're not asking for anything on site?
No, no, just to dump.
Just the dumps. And, and we don't usually do this. We've had other counties ask, we've had a lot of people ask to do this. We don't usually do this. I can tell people, we just spent $3 million to build a new cell in that landfill. And then we, we're spending $2 million a year to remediate some of the past practices that have happened in that land. So it, that landfill's one of our big expenses and very, very challenging. What would you be dumping?
Materials from the demolition of the building. One of the practices, I would make sure, and Kit Tolton's my contractor, is we put like things with like things according to whatever your dump procedures are to make it easier for you guys and, um, more efficient for the dump.
Yeah. So asbestos, you know?
There is no asbestos.
What materials are in there? Separation of wood, concrete, metals?
Yes.
You had a question?
Is there, um, does your insurance cover the expenses for demolition? Wouldn't they do cover this cost?
No.
Why, why would that be the case? I would think that for a loss like that, that would be part of the.
Not that I'm aware of. For, I don't know, it's just not in my insurance policy.
Have you talked to the insurance about this? And they said they won't cover the expenses of demolition?
It has not been, I didn't directly talk to them about that. I will ask them, but it has not been mentioned, and I've been on the phone for hours and hours and hours regarding the situation, but I will double check with them.
Yeah. I, I would think that would be, in such a situation, that would be a normal, recovered insurance cost. What do you, anyone else have comments on this?
I know insurance is a strange thing, just like the situation we were just talking about with my friend. 100% on him.
Yeah, yeah.
I think sometimes when it's, uh, natural causes, uh, things aren't covered, I know, so. I would say ask, make sure before a fee waiver.
You'd find to talk to them about that. Before we'd offer a fee waiver or anything of that nature, I'd need to talk to the landfill manager. Make sure where, what, and how, and, and the, the cost that it would incur, the county would incur. But like I said, I've, I've been on the phone this week with people that want to put juniper trees up there and all kinds of stuff, and, and we don't do that. We just don't, we're spending so much money on that facility that it's, it is a burden to the taxpayers and, and become a resource for, for one individual is very, very tough.
I understand, and I appreciate the consideration.
Okay.
What's the, what's the, would you estimate, or do they estimate, the, the number of, let's say, truckloads that would come in?
I've talked to Kit about it, and he, he just has expressed to me that it's so hard for him to get to come up with and understanding, it was a 10,000 square foot building. And, you know, I, I don't know. He doesn't know. I don't know how to figure that out.
Yeah, that's, it's a tough question, yeah, I get it.
That's where we're at right now, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, guys.
You bet. Okay. D E Q. Nope, no takers. Forest Service.
Good morning.
Good morning. And have you had contact with yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Huff wanted to be part of this, and he's, he's listening online, so.
Let me jump in and ask questions on his behalf.
Nice. All right, so, my name is Kim Obaly. I'm the District Ranger with the Westside Ranger District and currently National Grassland of the Caribou Target National Forest. And I have my Fire Management Officer, Dan Bartle, here with me. Chris Colt is, um, an agency administrator trainee, so he's sitting on, in on this. And Jared Fisher is from our supervisor's office, and he is here for moral support, I believe. The Bureau of Land Management is also here, um, and as an interagency partner, but we haven't coordinated real well.
We got a few more chairs.
Oh, they're, they're somewhere, but not here at the very, this very second. But we share an office with the Bureau of Land Management, and, um, we're trying to, you know, provide a, a united front here, um, as, as cooperators. So the purpose of the meeting is, um, to have a annual conversation with the, our, at, at a leadership level, preceding the wildfire season. So the idea is that we are, we are all aware that at the operational and tactical level, the GIF locally is, is in place. And prior to me taking this job, from what I can tell, the GIF sort of served as our, our cooperator meetings, you know, in our coordination. But the Chief of the Forest Service is interested in making sure that leadership is also talking and coordinating. And so we don't need to talk operations and tactics, we just need to refresh our relationship and before, you know, the smoke is in the air, kind of thing. And so we have a few items that we can, um, that we thought we would share with you briefly. And then, but as a dialogue, you guys can jump in anytime and ask questions and, and that sort of thing. So, can I pass this around, so these guys? And so apologies, we haven't, you know, tied in real close with the BLM, but you guys, Joel and Melissa, please jump in and, and offer whatever support you would like as well.
And please state your names for the record.
I'm Joel Goswiler, Fire Management Officer for Idaho Falls District, Bureau of Land Management.
I'm Melissa Davis, Field Manager, BLM, Pocatello.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so on this, uh, just short agenda, um, we, we can talk about the, kind of recap a little bit of the last year, um, talk about staffing and any changes, or what to expect in terms of our response at a high level. A little bit about what we think the predictive services are gonna look like, what, what this fire season might look like. And then give you some quick agency updates. And then talk a little bit about strategy in terms of our, what we call PODs, our potential operational delineations. And update you slightly on the Idaho Master Agreement that was just fully signed and executed last week. And talk a little bit about some local fuels projects. So that's kind of what we have planned. But like I said, please jump in, um, whenever anybody needs to. I'd like it to be a dialogue. And last year, we started this out with Commissioner Huff. He came to our office, um, and we talked these types of topics. And then, um, he preferred that we now take this conversation to, to this, the full group. And so we're kind of experimenting with ways of having this conversation. And if this works best for everybody, we can do it this way. You guys can come to our office, however that looks. Okay, so are there any questions so far?
Anytime the three Commissioners are together, we have to be on the record, so.
Sure.
I'm just telling you. Wherever we go, we'd have to bring our secretary, Nancy, to have to come with us and record and.
All right, so I, I believe this is probably a good venue for this. Are there any questions so far? Okay, all right. So, Dan, if you want to just kind of start us off, and then Joel, maybe you could jump in if you have anything to add, so.
So on, um, on the 2022, um, kind of recap of last year, it was a, it was fairly quiet season across the Great Basin, um, in general, our area here as well. Our largest fire was in our area, um, pertaining to Bannock County, was a two and a half, um, mile fire. And then we really didn't, it was just a slow start to season. Really didn't pick up activity until September, and September is when, um, it started. We saw the, the, the biggest bulk of our, our fires. 77 fires is what are in, on, on the East Idaho, um, our dispatch area is what, what we had, which is down from our average. But like I said, in the, in the, in the Great Basin, it was, it was down in general. Largest fire, of course, we had in, um, in the Great Basin was the Moose Fire by Salmon. Largest acres we had last year were, um, from a, from an agency standpoint, was in Alaska, which was the bulk of it. Looking forward to this season, um, the, we, with the winter we had, predicting this, looking at delays of start to the season. But as the, the fuels dry out, as, as the grass cures, in the, in the, in the lowlands particularly, it, it will pick up. Up north, northern Idaho, as, you know, where we saw that smoke, you know, up north, Canada, they had, they had a lot less snow than we had, so they're picking up earlier. They've already, you know, from a, um, a, um, the big standpoint, they have, we're looking at the Pacific Northwest of that, uh, northern country, it was a lot drier than we are for this winter. So they, they picked up earlier. Our northern slopes up in the Highlands shouldn't really, it, it'll be a while before they can really become receptive, but down low, when the grasses start curing out, we'll have a delay, but when the, when those grasses start curing out, generally, we're expecting things to pick up and have this, the, um, their, the predictive services saying that we're having a, you know, um, average to slightly above average fire season later in the fall. And that's kind of what we saw last year, as, as things started drying up, and as the grasses start curing out, our seasons are getting, are getting longer. And so, you know, Ju-, you know, June, July is when things start happening, but by, by August, September, you know, the grasses have cured out, and they're, and they're receptive to burn. So we're, you know, don't, you know, the, the Highlands, because we did get the snow, I, I don't really, you know, we're not looking at, it's gonna be a delayed start, but we, the fuels are, are gonna be there in, in the lowland countries is because of the, the moisture we have in the receiving. It'll be delayed, but it will, it'll, it'll be showing up. Far as staffing for the Forest Service, and I'll let Joel cover staffing for the BLM, but staffing for the Forest Service on the, on the, on the Caribou Target, we have 18 engines staffed this, this summer. We have on, here in Pocatello, the, we have two Type 6s of, fully staffed. And in Malad, for our, our zone, we have one Type 6, fully staffed. At the airport, we're, um, June 1st, the heavy helicopter will come on, um, the Type 1 helicopter. And then June 20th, the Type 3 helicopter will be coming on. The one big change that we do have this year from a forest standpoint is that we don't have our 20-person crew, the Centennial Crew. It's just because of inability to, it's hard to hire folks. And so, and to get good leadership, so we stood down that crew for this, for this season. And so we, what folks were on those, we just distributed out to the engines, so.
So I was at a NACO conference, or a WER conference down in St. George last week, and they was talking about the Forest Service employees suing the Forest Service to not be able to use retardant?
I'm not sure I'm aware of that.
That was a, a big fear for the West. Not, not what it was, was all the Western states is that, within their own organization, the Forest Service, because of environmental problems, they're claiming. We don't have planes and retardant, we're gonna be in trouble.
Right.
Well, and we've, we've done a lot of research in the last few years, the last several years over retardant and waterways is the big, is the big concern with what happens when it gets in waterways. Interestingly enough, we are going to a new product that they are based here in Pocatello this year that, uh, is a little more, supposed to be a little more sustainable, and it's a little more widespread. So it's a new product that they developed in the last 10 years, but it didn't work very well with the old product. So you pretty much have, have to wash every plane, all their tanking, all their pumping systems anytime you go between products. And since a lot of the larger tanker bases are going to this new product, it makes sense that the, all the bases around interregional area go to the same product. Otherwise, you would lose a lot of efficiency washing aircraft between every time they move to a new base. So, something we're working on.
Okay.
For our knowledge, we're not limiting the use of aerial retardant.
At this point, for this year.
Good.
Joel, did you want to cover the updates for the staffing for the BLM folks?
You bet, that segues real well into the airbase. I think that's a big one for us. We started major construction last year out of the airbase here in Pocatello. Some of that is primarily designed for better accommodation of the new generation of aircraft as they become available. One thing that was very unique about Pocatello and the Great Basin region, so Nevada, Utah, and southern Idaho, was we were the only airbase that could handle a very large air tankers, the DC-10s. There are several of those nationally, so generally speaking, that bodes well for our region and our area in particular, in that we will usually have one or two of those aircraft in our base once we get up and really busy and in higher fire danger in our area. So that project is going very well. We have our original two reloading pits that are, should be all paved with a larger ramp and larger area for that aircraft to turn when, when they come ingress and egress. And then there's a third pit, which will expand our capability quite a bit. And I don't expect that to be on line until late this fire season at some point. But that will be, bode very well for our area moving into the future. So I think that's a highlight to bring up. Staffing wise, we have some of the same challenges that Dan alluded to. There's a wildland fire in general is getting a lot of attention, I think, nationally due to some of the large catastrophic seasons we've had lately. And there's a lot of additional positions out there, so it's a, a lot of competition for a few scarce people. So we're down, I believe, staffing on two engines in this general area out of our East Idaho Fire Center. One down in Malad and one in, uh, Soto Springs this year. So a total of 11 engines we'll be staffing. But we have a good plan in place to surge capacity, to bring in extra resources when we start getting a little busy, and we'll station at those locations. Usually, it's people that used to work for us that are now working in another area, so when we bring them in, they're familiar right off the bat with our area. So outside of that, we'll also be staffing three dozers. It's our normal, normal staffing out of this area. And then overhead wise, similar. So we have all those positions filled. And then just yesterday, we certified our local Type 1 interagency hotshot crew, Snake River. They went on board, uh, this morning at 0600, they're available national. So since Great Basin is right now at a pretty low fire danger for the next couple of weeks overall, they're first on the board to probably go to Canada a little later this week if those, if those fires continue and they are asking for more help. That'll be the first crew out of the Great Basin that goes in that area. Otherwise, they'll be here helping us on our local fuels projects, so. That's it for staffing for us.
Have you got burnings going on now? Eyes up Cottonwood yesterday, and there was some fires going up there.
Yeah, probably. I know, um, the Payette National Forest and the McCall, all that area, they've, they've been looking for help. This is a good time of year for scrap fires, as you come out of, uh, the dormant season, and you're starting to get some green up. It's a great time of year to go burn slash and jackpot fuels, et cetera, and have a little bit of a reduced risk, so. Try to take advantage of that window as the snow comes off.
We was up, looking at the areas they're gonna scrub, up in them two areas with contractors yesterday afternoon, so.
Great. Okay, well, in terms of just, um, agency updates in terms of the Forest Service, just wanted to bring awareness to the, in 2022, the Chief of the Forest Service has issued a 10-year wildfire crisis strategy. And with, funded by the, the bipartisan infrastructure or, uh, infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act, there's a lot of funding to address, um, try to get ahead of the wildfire crisis. It's gonna be difficult, but the idea is to focus efforts in the highest-risk communities across the West. And I brought a piece of paper that, um, showed where all the money is going on the front piece, and then where, where the landscapes are receiving the money. And so it's just for a really high-level perspective of, of, and then realizing that southeast Idaho is not one of those priority landscapes where a lot of money is, is headed. But just to know where your money is headed, this gives a, a good idea. I found this, and I thought it was, it was good for perspective. So that is how the wildfire crisis strategy is rolling out, generally speaking. But what that means to us locally in southeast Idaho is, you know, we, we're not being, we don't have a lot of focus, and, and we don't have a lot of capacity. And so sometimes we're pulled away from here to go to these other places. And so there are people at multiple levels, at very high strategic, you know, look at this. If we have issues, you know, I mean, if we have incidents, I should say, you know, we will, we will all band together and figure it out. But just having an awareness that there's a lot of focus in these, these other areas with that crisis. And I don't exactly know how the BLM fits into that, other than we are interagency cooperators, and we help each other out as much as we can. And that's kind of what this whole meeting is about, just to renew those relationships and whatnot. Those, as, as Dan said, the, the wildfire seasons are getting bigger and longer, and, um, our staffing is challenging, and we just need to be strategic in how we, and how we address things. So with that, that, we, we normally have a Chief's Letter by now that gives some leaders intent, but he has not issued that yet, so we, we're still waiting on the Chief's Letter. But is our, Melissa, or Joel, do you have any agency updates in general related to wildfire that you want, might want to share?
Well, with Bill and Ira, I'll let, um, Joel speak to the fuels piece. But for Bill and Ira, Idaho was one of the three, or one of the states to get three, uh, restoration landscapes selected for, um, funding for a myriad of, of activities in addition to fuels. And, um, south, or the eastern half of Idaho, um, has two. So, um, Pocatello and what we refer to as Upper Snake, so Pocatello, Idaho Falls, is one, uh, landscape. And then Salmon and Charles is another landscape. And then down in Boise, where it connects into Twin, is another landscape. And each of those landscapes are looking at about $10 million each in, um, funding for restoration and, and different contracting, um, projects. And that's in addition to fuels. So. So, a lot of money going down on the ground for a lot of projects, not enough people to get the work done, so looking to contract a lot else.
And, and it's interesting for, one of our bigger issues in fuels upon our land, on the BLM lands and the lowlands, has been the invasive species, and increased fire load from tea grass, et cetera, so we've invested heavily in, in lots of fuel breaks, trying to do a lot of restoration on the ground to bring back natives into some of those, so that's been very helpful. I think Idaho BLM, as a whole for the BLM, we, we try to treat a million acres a year, and Idaho treats over a quarter million of those acres, so a lot of that emphasis goes into a little bit west of here in the lowlands, but we're trying to keep what we have and that, and keep that tea grass from not coming this way and becoming a hard or monarch type. But I think I wanted to go back to Chairman's comment on Cottonwood, I got the wrong Cottonwood, I was thinking of North, Northern Idaho, you're talking right down here in your county.
Downy.
Yep, and we're meeting, I think, this week, and I think one of the things that is a good emphasis for this is our partnerships across landscapes and across ownerships. Bannan County's always been a big priority for BLM funding for woo-wee, because we're right there in the interface with you. And High Country RCND has been very critical to implementing a lot of projects on private land, adjacent to projects we've been treating in this county and all over Eastern Idaho, and for the Forest Service as well through IDL grants. I believe that's what we're working down in Cottonwood, so I wanted to highlight that because we did just renew that agreement with High Country for another five years. We just did an agreement with ISU to work on vegetation mapping for us for the next several years, and that's gonna be focused on Aspen restoration, which is a double edge for us, because it helps with wildlife, like it helps restore a lot of good wildlife habitat, and then on the wildland fireside, it helps, a lot of times that'll slow fires down, gives us a, a place to catch them, because Aspen gets replaced by Conifer, which is a lot more prominent. So, we're excited about that project as well. And then, I believe it's the SIOG is what it was told to me, but the Southeast Idaho Council of Government, and that's one that we were working with down by McCam, and that might be a similar project to what you were looking at this week. And we just did a, an announcement for an agreement that we're hoping that that group will put in on as well, so that we'll have three different nonprofit entities working in the area. And Bannan County's always been one of our priorities. We're working a lot up in Madison County on some fuel breaks up around the Manaboot area as well, but I know that the emphasis for that this year is around Johnny Creek, and I believe they're gonna die, RCND is gonna be treating the drainage bottoms that are city-owned, and then that'll also go through that grant with IDL and through the Forest Service, and then our, with our grant, they'll be treating the private lands in the back yards of the homeowners. So, pretty excited about getting back into that area. Last year, I believe, it was the Satterfield subdivision, so they'll continue to look at some of those spots around Pocatello. And then our crews are gonna be working on maintaining second entries on a lot of the projects that we did back in the early 2000s, so they'll be going back through and just making sure that they're keeping the junipers that are coming up, you know, reduced, so the fuel loads a lot lighter. Emphasis area around the dump and some of Johnny Creek area that we treated quite a while ago. Next year, I believe, we're shifting that emphasis up into Meek Creek, and there will be a little more of a Forest Service BLM estate land up there. So, that's quite a bit going around, right around Pocatello. Our hotshot crew, when they're not gone and traveling, they'll be down working with, for us, on our local fuels project down to Crystal Springs, which is just down a little bit east of McCam and there, as you well know. And then, one area that we would really like to ramp back up, that's a high priority for us moving forward on private land, will be the lab or anxious subdivision, so that's one that we're looking at in the upcoming year, so I think that covers pretty much our, our fuels projects coming up, so, but we're excited. A lot of projects that we're maintaining, and with some of the additional funding, we'll look at some of the areas where we're looking to.
Thank you.
Well, then that's a good segue into just talking a little bit about some of the projects we have going on.
So, for us, we're currently, last couple of weeks, we've been burning in Raleigh Canyon, that's on the southern, southern end by, Bannan County by I-15. We have, we burned two-hundred-ten acres up in there, up in that juniper, adjacent to private property up in that, that country. That project is two thousand, twenty-seven-hundred acres, it's a lot, and that one is, will be, how that project, we go, it's contracted, the, to follow the juniper, then we go back in there in the spring and, and burn that to reduce the fuel loading and for wildlife habitat in that, in that area. That project's gonna be continuing on for two, three, at least two, three years, as those, the, the contractors come available during the summer to, for the, for the cutting in. Forest, our Forest Account crews will be cutting in there as well, but hopefully, our plan is to be burning two to five hundred acres in there every year for the next, like, three, four years. Our next project coming up after that is not Bannan County, but it's over just on the backside of Pebble, and that's our Stone King project, that's a, a timber cell, and also just a, it's a, just a forest health project. It's going to be, it's about three thousand acres, and it's, it's, it's gonna be coming online probably in the next few years, looking at harvesting and also doing some prescribed burning and mechanical treatment back in that area. Our next project that we're starting right up is back in Bannan County, it's gonna be, it's the lower Portniff, so it's every, it's from Trail Creek on the Portniff, on the Portniff range, out towards Scout Mountain, and that's gonna be about thirty-five-hundred acres, and we're-
On the Bannan.
On the Bannan, sorry, on the Bannan range, excuse me. And so, that one is, we're just starting the analysis process on that, looking at different treatments in that area, and that one is, will be associated with, with wildlife, also with fuel, this, the fuel reduction, and also our watershed health. And that one's gonna be mechanical and also prescribed burning in that. And that one, that one's probably, that would, we're hoping for 2025 is when that decision should be, should be coming forward, so.
Yeah, that, that one will be more high-profile, and we will, there'll be a chance we'll have to go through a lawsuit first, but it's the one that's gonna be really necessary, because it's right here in our front country, so we'll, we'll just see where that goes. And so, getting support from our local cooperators is gonna be important.
That one, that one will be in that Meek Creek, Johnny Creek, Gibson Jack, coming down, putting some, tying it into our pods, lines, looking at opportunities for, for to reduce the fire effects during wildfire. So, that's, that's it for our, our coming up projects.
All right, so, in terms of strategic fire management, I thought I would touch on the fact that there's a new Idaho master agreement, and a little bit of what that, look what that is. It's a, it facilitates coordination between all the federal agencies and the state of Idaho, and that's the Bureau, or it's the, you know, the Interior Department and the Agriculture Department agencies, as well as all of the different departments under Idaho. And it's an umbrella agreement where all of the local agreements tier-two, and that last signature happened in May. And so, it really just outlines the, the roles, responsibilities, authorities, cost allocation, all of that related to working multi-jurisdictional fire, wildfire incidents. It's, it's really complicated, and, and I don't wanna go, I, I don't even, I can't even, I can't even go into a whole lot of details, I just wanted to bring awareness to it, and, and also if Joel has something specific he wants to talk about. The only thing that I don't, it failed to address, in my opinion, is what we call fires on unprotected lands, and those are lands that are not on a federal, on public land, they're not covered by a fire district in a county, and the state doesn't have responsibility for them, and they're those, they're called no man's lands or unprotected lands, and there's a, there's a handful in Bannan County, and it's a struggle when we all get together to address a wildfire, and then we can't figure out who's gonna pay for it, kind of thing. So, and of course, that's where the fires start, so. It's, it's just bringing awareness to it, that we will need to get together and be really closely coordinating when something like that happens. It does, but of course, the closest forces concept will still occur, whoever's closest to the fire will address it, and then we will all have mutual aid in the first twenty-four hours, none of that changes. But beyond that twenty-four hour period, there could be some complicated cost-sharing things that have to happen. And that's generally the overview of what that agreement is and does, and it's a few years incoming, but all of our local agreements tier-to that, and I just wanted to mention that, and I'm not sure I'm the best person to ask, answer questions on it, but I wanted to make sure you are aware of it. And Joel, do you have anything to add?
The one thing I'll add for this area, and it's funny you mentioned Cottonwood, but the part of that agreement for years was called the offset, and that is where BLM had a fairly robust fire workforce in Southern Idaho, so they took, they, they're providing protection for state of Idaho, on Idaho Department of Lands, lands, and it used to be called the Cottonwood Fire Protection District, and they taxed, and they still do tax for protection of private timber, I believe, over five or ten acres. So, we would provide that protection through interagency and closest forces since the eighties in, in Southern Idaho, and then they would reciprocate Northern Idaho, and Idaho Department of Lands would protect some of our BLM ones up there and Forest Service. It worked out pretty well. Part of what they have moving forward is that fire, IDL will be standing up firefighting resources in Southern Idaho again. I believe they started building apparatus this year, and next year they plan to hire them, and we will bring them into our center as an interagency partner, just like with everybody else, so that's good. We're bringing in some more assets to Southern Idaho, and that will help us with buyers in our area, so.
Got a question from Commissioner Huff. Have we or can we start the process of putting in a good neighbor authority agreement? Is that, has that already been in talks, or?
The only good neighbor authority agreement that we have in the Forest Service in this area is related to range management, so, and I think on the northern part of our forest, there's some good neighbor agreements in place, I can't speak to them real easily. I think we always want to try to find things that can incorporate something like the good neighbor authority, but we don't have anything other than something related to targeted grazing on, where, on, in this area for Forest Service. Do you guys have anything?
For the good neighbor authority? I'm always looking for ways to use the good neighbor authority, get the money out of my hands and into somebody else's to get stuff done, so I, I don't have anything right off the top of my head that we're, that I can think of that we're pursuing, but as far as BLM's concerned, I'm, I'm always open.
Right.
So, if there's something you wanna try, something you wanna partner up on, I'm all about it, so.
So, I'm not familiar with that term. What is good neighbor authority?
It's just a, basically, in a nutshell, it's a way to, it's a mechanism, a tool to transfer money from federal agency to a partner to help accomplish specific goals.
Okay, thank you.
Another pot of money. I think that's gonna be about it for us in terms of just general information and updating, and at this point, I mean, if you have any other questions, or if anybody else has anything that they wanna add?
So, this is not fire, but it's something that comes up pretty regular when we talk, and that's the parking lot in, in expanding it. What would be the process to do that?
It is on our program of work, and it's, it's just a matter of getting the right people scheduled to get out there and see if we can check some boxes, get some money, get some analysis, and make it happen. It's not as easy as it should be, or that it seems like, but-
Well, the creek's running right there, it's, I mean, I-
Yeah.
There's a lot of-
Right, so it's, it's in process, I, I, we could talk offline a little bit more about that, but.
Got a lot of water in it right now.
It does. I live in income.
Like, couple, couple feet, yeah, yeah.
Yes. And that's one of the, one of the only areas that we've had mudslides, is up in Raleigh Canyon this year.
Wow. We should get out there and look at that sooner rather than later, while the water's on it. It's a good idea.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So, who, are you the point of contact then for the federal agencies for fire?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That'd be my role as chairman, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, John? Come on up.
I'm here on, on behalf of the Compendium Bible Church. I missed the exemption deadline of April eighteenth. I had a, in my brain, it was June twentieth when the property taxes were due, and it's all, all falls on me, so I'm requesting a exemption for Compendium Bible Church for parcels R-1 CP 1,100 and RTNT triple zero one oh one. We are registered with the State of Idaho as a nonprofit, Bible, or as a church, and so it's, I made a boo-boo, and it's on me for doing that.
And this isn't the first time?
No, it isn't.
You were here last year.
I did it last year, last, last year I was diagnosed with cancer, and so things, things got a little out of hand there, and I won't bother you with my excuses with the family and stuff, but anyway, it's on me, I had the wrong date, and if you wanna beat me with a stick, I guess you can for, for not getting the right date.
Well, and, and you're entitled to the tax exemption.
Yes.
But you do have to meet the deadlines to be entitled, that's, that's the key.
Yes, sir.
And like last year we told you, we, we don't do this every year, I kinda made an exception, because we had other people, we could've made you pushback to BOE, but we, we kinda made an exception here, but any concerns?
No.
You wanna make motion?
Well, me too.
Well, you can make it.
I'll make a motion that we go, go ahead and provide the tax exemption per the applicant as, as given. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right?
Okay, yeah, I won't miss it.
We're gonna have to make Russ come.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. DEQs here now?
We just came to say hello, and I don't have anything specific, just wanted to say hi and remind you that we're here, and happy to cooperate on different projects. I know we've talked in the past about different sewer projects and things like that, and so I also brought Alan Johnson, he's our engineering manager, and just wanted to get his name and face and business card, we'll pass our business cards around as well, so that you've got a number to call should you need us. I also wanted to share with you all our DEQ snapshot for fiscal year 2022, and this just shows some of our goals as an agency, and how, where we met those goals last year, and, and then of course, we're putting that together again for, for the upcoming year, but it just kinda shows what we do as an agency and, and how, how things are moving along. As far as our agency, oh, thank you. Our agency goals, we-
That's the Forest Service.
Yeah, that's-
They're just here.
Didn't know that was for me. Yeah, you're gonna, you're having Natural Resources Day apparently.
Oh, it is, it is.
That's good, we'll just keep the momentum. Anyhow, as an agency, we've really been focused a lot on, last year, we had received an enormous amount of ARPA funding to help facilitate communities with their drinking water and wastewater programs, and so now, a lot of that money's been awarded, some in your county, and I know income, and maybe it in this county, and Alan might know better, but now we're working to help those communities spend that money. Of course, everybody is dealing with the same thing, we have federal funding that has come to our agencies, but it's getting the boots on the ground to get the work completed, and the money we've given to communities is no different, there's a lot of inflationary costs they're all dealing with and manpower costs, and so we're trying to help communities get through that and upgrade their drinking water and wastewater systems, so, so that's been great. It allowed us to give some grant money to communities, normally, we issue those- Normally, we issue those funds in low-interest loans as part of our state revolving fund, but the ARPA did allow us to get some free money out on the ground to kind of give a boost to those projects. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of need across the state of Idaho, and, but our, our region got, got some good, good funding. So that's been a big focus of our agency. What we see coming is, we're really seeing a lot of funding for grants in clean air quality coming down the road. I don't have a lot of detail on that yet because it's still being determined and all that, but coming, coming our way is a lot of funding for clean air projects, focus on somewhat climate change and things like that. And so hopefully, we'll be able to facilitate communities to get those dollars and put them to good use on the ground and all of that. So that's a big agency focus. As far as our region, so Alan and I are in Pocatello region. Of course, I, I've met you before, but I haven't met you, Commissioner, and I'm the regional administrator here in Pocatello. We cover seven counties, and so we're a regional office. And for our office in particular, Alan's been really focused on a lot of projects to help our, our counties deal with the growth pressures that our state has seen in the last couple of years. And trying to really be focused on providing solutions for, like your planning and zoning committees and groups to have good tools in the toolbox to deal with these subdivision, like proposals that are coming through the door at rapid pace, probably rap, more rapid than we've seen previously. It might be slowing down a little bit now, but, but I'll let Alan speak to all the projects he's got going on and...
Yeah, so, well, and mainly, and I've actually, like, just two weeks ago, Hal Jensen and Tristan Borkum came into our office and met with Stephen Smith and myself, and, and talked about, you know, some of the issues about, you know, trying to protect groundwater and, and how to deal with the, the, kind of the overwhelming influx of proposals for subdivisions that, where there's no sewer services available, for example. And so we're, you know, we had a really good talk with, with them, and, you know, I told them about some of these things, that we're, we're doing a project right now, the, the state, our state office is, is doing a project, and I've also worked on some, some things to identify best management practices for groundwater protection alternatives and maybe new technologies that, that are better alternatives than septic systems. And Hal and I also talked about doing community septic systems rather than individual systems, because then, when, when the growth brings the sewer line to that neighborhood, it's a lot easier to, to connect. And we're also, one of the things he was most excited about, and so am I, we're, DEQ's going to be working with the Idaho Geological Survey to, to develop some models that will look at, at the soil, the soil types and the groundwater, the aquifer, the amount of, the amount of water that's flowing and the velocity that, that we know that the water is flowing through various aquifers, and then we can model, basically, and come up with, with, the ultimate goal is to have some maps that would show allowable septic system densities, and that would be a really good planning tool. Because right now, we really have, there's kind of the, kind of have this five-acre rule, but there's really no science behind that, and some counties have a five-acre rule in their ordinance and some don't, and, but it might be 10 acres, or it could be one acre. I mean, it really all depends on the site-specific...
Soils.
Soils and the, and the, and the, and the amount of water, the depth to groundwater, and how much there is, how fast it's flowing. And so that's the, that's what we're, we're really wanting to get, is some tools that are just, that are more usable, more user-friendly for, for these planning and development staff to, to make informed decisions about that sort of thing. So that's really my focus right now. And I feel like, we also talked about, they, Hal expressed maybe some interest in doing a, looking into a source water grant to, to maybe do a, do some, something in regard to this. I know we talked about looking into, like, maybe what would it look like to have a regional sewer district here, and those ideas have been floating, floating around, and we're, we're here to help facilitate that however we can, if that's the best path, path forward. So...
Yeah. The challenge is, we're behind already.
Yeah.
I mean, just like after an Inca on the Gilbert Project, should have been annexed, should, shouldn't be septic systems, plain and simple. But we're behind. Developer comes in, wants their money back. I mean, that's, it's plain and simple. So Inca, they're having problems right now. I talk with the mayor regularly.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, he's been calling our office as well, and we've been very, very engaged with, with the city of Inca. I, I don't think it, it takes much to look as you're driving by and see those wastewater ponds full of water, and the field's full of water, too. And so we're aware, and yeah, I think our folks have been working very closely with him to look for solutions and try to help be as flexible as we possibly can be to deal with that.
And that's much appreciated. I mean, small-town mayor, very limited resources, needs all the, the support they can get.
Yeah. Yeah, he's been very good to work with, and just great communication, and that's, honestly, that's the biggest help we can get, is if we, if we have a problem, let's just talk and get together. We appreciate our phone ringing and, and to be aware and to just work on things. Our team is very solutions-oriented and solutions-focused. We're not looking for a reason to come, put our regulator hat on. We're looking for a way to help communities deal with these things. We live in these communities, too, and so we're, that's the focus of our team, and yeah, there's, it is, we're behind as a state. We got hit with growth statewide that was unexpected and greater than normal, so there's a lot of challenges to deal with. But yeah, to participate, I know there's been some momentum in the past for looking at some regionalization, and we'd be happy to participate and help facilitate where we could.
And then our landfill. Any concerns?
Yeah, your landfill is, I mean, there's concerns because there's a, a big TCE flint, but I, you've got a really good contractor working on that, and they've been drilling wells this year, and really putting a lot of effort into enhancing the remediation program that you've got going at the site. I, I have high expectations. I, I think that you guys are headed down the right path, for sure. We've had a little bit of turnover, so our lead person that was working on that project has retired, so, but we've been working to get all the manpower in place. We've had a short-term solution until that person gets back built. So anyhow, yeah, I think things are moving, moving along well there, but there's a lot of work to be done still.
I had no idea who she was.
Okay.
She was at the BLM. She left her purse.
She was probably part that I got handed earlier. Yeah. Yeah. So anyhow, yeah, I think, I think things at your landfill are, are moving forward the way that they need to be. And I went and attended the annual meeting and got another update, and, I mean, like I said, everything's moving pretty well. You've got a good group of people working on that issue.
Questions?
I'd like to see if I couldn't set up a meeting and come talk to you guys similar to what Hal and Tristan did.
Absolutely. Yeah. We'd be happy to, to talk about wastewater systems and drinking water.
All of the stuff. I'll give you a call.
Give me a call, and we'll set it up, for sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
Oh, yes. All right. Nikki?
Hi.
Hello.
So I'm Nikki Ennis. I'm the extension educator for Vanette County for 4H, so, and then I think I was just here to, the Fair Board had some contracts for some people that were using the arena in Downey. And I don't know if you want me to give you a little 4H update, but the last seven months, we got funding from ARPA also, and so we hired a person, another program assistant, and so we've reached, in the last seven months, we've reached about over 4,000 youth in Vanette County, and we've been in all the elementary schools and middle schools. So we've been doing robotics, nutrition, gardening, kind of a little bit of everything, but, and then our numbers are expanding exponentially for fair, so we're up in steers. We have 33 steers that we weighed in. We have about the same amount of pigs, so about 57 sheep. It's gone up. We're not going to have enough room in the barn. And then goats, we're way, way over. We have about 30 goats right now, which we've never had before, and chickens, we're at about 100 chickens right now, so, and then horses, I don't know numbers yet on that, but our fair's going to be really big.
Okay. And we signed the salary rate approval form.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
But these 4H groups that want to use the facility...
Mm-hmm.
What's the normal cost?
I, the Fair Board's never given me a cost for it, so I, they gave me the contract, or that had been filled out, and they said that I need to bring them in front of the commission. I'm not sure what the cost is that they charge for the arenas, though.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's, and usually, I require that whoever's asking for a fee waiver...
Mm-hmm.
...come and present before us.
Okay.
That.
Okay.
They come and tell us what their group does, and...
So I can tell you what...
Any commitment?
Yeah. I could tell you what those groups do. One of them meets with the dog kids, all the 4H kids that are doing the dog project, and then the other group is for riding, and so they're working on horse, horsemanship and, I guess, stuff like that, so...
And, and actually, I don't know what buildings they'd be using for the dogs.
They're, they just use the outside grass area.
Grass area?
Yeah.
But I stopped by there yesterday, and those that are doing the horses, I mean, we have to groom the, the, also, right now, they're putting in the shelters to go over the bleachers.
Yeah.
And so there's excavation going on and trenches around, and, and so...
Yeah, I know the main arena isn't in use right now, but they just wanted to, I think they were just going to use the practice arena.
Well, and I, I have no problem doing this. It's 4H groups, and we usually do it at no cost, but in the future...
Yeah.
Whoever the leaders are, or bring some of the youth.
Okay.
And it makes it go a whole lot easier.
Okay.
Because I like to tell the youth that they have responsibility to keep that area clean.
Yeah.
No vandalism, no, you know, all these little things that happen when...
Definitely.
Sometimes they're not supervised.
Well, they, they better be supervised, because I would have a problem with that.
And that's why I like to talk to the leadership and the youth themselves.
Well, and I can, I can reach out to them and talk to them also, and make sure that they get your message, so, but I, personally, for me, as the educator, they shouldn't be unsupervised, like, they have to have parents there, they have to...
Well, it's a time that they're not at 4H, but they're thinking they can go there and utilize the facility with...
Yeah, and they can't.
There's not a lot of people around that, that facility all the time.
Yeah.
So...
I can see, I can understand that.
Any questions, John?
No, sounds like some good programs for the kids.
Do a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve both of these agreements.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to take them with you? I guess, go down, go down to Christie. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's good.
We'll, we'll take them to Christie.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You bet. Scott?
It's been a fun week for us. So last week, as you win, as you know, we had our first concert, and we learned a few things, which is going to lead into this discussion. I'll be brief on my, on my explanation. We found that although we got people in pretty quickly and got people taken care of for a concert of roughly 2,600 people, our concert this week is double that size, and we don't want to get...
So your concert this week is what?
Double that size.
Double?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the way ticket sales are moving, we might actually exceed the, the, my thought on, I thought we'd hit maybe 5,000, and we're selling close to 200 tickets a day right now. And so we're at 4,600 tickets. So it's going to be, it's going to be close, but we are really pushing up against staffing. And so, you know, when I came in on Monday morning, we had roughly seven applications for our security staff. We need probably about, I don't know, maybe 25 more people. And so we, we looked into a couple of different options. We worked with Christie and, and Human Resources to try to see if we could do an expedited hire on some of these part-time staffers. We were able to find three people that could actually come and can work for us. We interviewed and, and moved forward with that. And so that's, I think, the first part of this, is to see if we can get approval on some salary rate approval forms to get those expedited.
Already signed.
Already signed. Okay. So that, that was the first part, I believe. The second part is, we reached out to, when we first started the concerts, we had a temporary agency that specifically handles events, reach out to us, and that Idaho Falls, they have an office in Pocatello. We tried to see if they could, if they could get us some people. We asked them to get us 20, and they found 20 people for us for this weekend. And so that is the contract you have in front of you. I did talk to the, the folks about the contract, after hearing some illegals concerns, which there are concerns that we're all aware of with the indemnification and then the, the location of the state. They were okay with changing the location of the state, or at least modifying that so that it could be in Idaho, but they did not want to take out the indemnification piece. And their, their concern is that while, if something happens to an employee while they're working for us, they cover them under workers' comp, but if something happens to property while they're working for us, supervised by us, that we're the ones responsible for it, not, not them. And so that's where the, they receive their protections, is through the indemnification. The example she gave is if you have somebody with an iPad and they drop it and break the iPad, we pay for the iPad. If they drop that iPad...
The example is what?
If, if something, like, one of their employees has an iPad, they drop the iPad, break the iPad, we're responsible for that. If they break, drop the iPad, it breaks their toe, they're responsible for that. So they're responsible for the workers' comp side, but because we supervise the people, we're responsible for the actions that they take. And that's what the indemnification provides them.
Typically, indemnification isn't necessarily that. It's if there's a lawsuit, you know, then we agree to pay for their attorneys and any court awards or anything like that. So if they're concerned, I mean, we, we make them look at it.
Yeah.
That's why when we look at indemnification, that's what we're looking at, that way from the court perspective and agreeing to.
Yeah. That, that was their justification for not wanting indemnification removed from the, the contract, and so...
Well, we've done this up there before with the workers that we've had, we've brought, so they're contracted workers, not our employees, and so that they are the responsibility of whoever we contract with in that manner, for medical, any of that kind of stuff, any obligations. So I don't have any problem.
I have another question here. There's a clause in here called minimum conversion hours. Remember that?
Mm-hmm.
It's on, anyway, it says on page, well, this is, I guess in our work session, it's page 12, but anyway, it says minimum conversion hours 5:20, see paragraph 10. Then I go to paragraph 10. Do you have this on yours, Brian?
I do have it pulled up. 10?
It's on page 11 of the packet. It's where I'm going to see the paragraph 10 that it referenced, so down in... we are committing to have these employees work a certain number of hours. And if we don't, then we're paying a penalty fee, so to speak.
So typically, what that, the way that relates, if I'm understanding, is that if we have somebody come up and work for us, that we cannot hire them out from the temp service until they have met that 520-hour temp service agreement. So let's say I have somebody comes up and they say, ma'am, I'd really like to work for you, and it's cheaper for me to hire them. I cannot hire them until they have worked the 520 hours for the temp service. Or if I do, the temp service can come back and get, and penalize us. So what we have to do is we essentially, if they're temp workers, they're temp workers until they hit that. And we ran into this before where we've had temp workers come up and want to work for us full-time, and we cannot do it because of that clause in there. So that prohibits us from hiring them out from under the temp agency.
And we see these sometimes in temp services.
That's your understanding, too?
It is, because they're worried they're recruiting, you know, and getting these employees, and they just don't want people to start cherry picking them. So they put these types of clauses in there saying, before you can take them from us, if you hire them for a job that we contracted you with.
That was my only concern. I didn't know what they were talking about.
Yeah, and that has unfortunately happened. That's happened. We've had a staffing agency that came to us and said, last night, you guys hired one of our people, and they hadn't worked these hours. And so that's, again...
So we have some kind of process in place to make sure we're not accidentally going afoul of this and having to...
Yeah, the process is we won't hire their people. We just won't hire their people. I mean, that's the safest bet for us, honestly.
Process is right there.
Yeah, the safest bet is we just don't hire their people. So they'll have people that come up, and I can promise you, they're going to say, we want to work here.
Right.
And I'm going to say, sorry, you can't. And we did that, the last time we had a temp agency, which was two years ago, I ran into that on probably two or three occasions with people that just really wanted to work for us. And we just would not hire them because of their, because of the contract with the...
I know with me, I always have to have things to make sure I remember what I'm supposed to be doing. Checklist, whatever. You're hiring a lot of people.
We are.
Out there. And so I guess I'm just saying, I hope you have some kind of thing other than, your memory is probably better than mine.
No.
But hopefully, something in place that's going to ensure that maybe they're on the list or something.
Yeah.
We realize that we checked that list and make sure we're not running afoul of this.
Yeah.
We can check that list when they send us the invoice for payment. We'll just verify, we can, the three of us can...
So if we're going to hire someone, we make sure we're not running afoul of this.
Yeah, make sure they're not on that list.
And we, and again, I have done this before, but with small numbers, this is a lot bigger numbers.
Right.
So you're right, we'll have to, you know, make sure that we, we'll have a sign-in, sign-out sheet from those guys just to verify that we'll send back the staffing agency so they can verify how many hours they worked. And so we'll know the names of everybody and we'll just let our, you know, our hiring folks know that we just can't touch these guys.
Right.
So...
The only other thing I'd like to say, and really not related to this, but to the last concert, is I was very impressed with all the work you guys put into this. I mean, it was obvious, a tremendous amount, obviously a tremendous amount of work that you guys put into this. I thought that last concert performer was really good. So, and I know we discussed, there's a few things to fix going forward, but I thought you guys did a great job.
Thank you very much. And it is a lot of work, but hopefully, a few more people will make the load a little bit lighter here, so.
Hopefully. That's all I got.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
All right. Ashley.
We have folks on the county service lines who put up an hour, just so we know.
Oh, is that the one that...
Yeah.
Under your, okay. Well, well, they'll be next.
Just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. Ashley Brinkhurst with D6 Treatment.
Carrie Hong, trial court administrator. Mr. Chairman, it's the Commission. Ashley and I are here today to put our requests. What we're looking at is if we monitor our D6 budget, we have overutilized in our B-line our, the dollars that we had set for contracts. We've had difficulty recruiting historically. We've had a vacancy in this year for about seven months, and we've used that contract services to help kind of manage the workload. What we'd like to do, or what we propose to the Commission to balance this out and also provide further opportunity to keep contract services, is to move salary savings realized in the A budget to the B budget. We've been discussing this with Christie. I think we're encouraged by the fact that through about 60% of the county FY, we've utilized about 80% of our budgeted revenue. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, they're exceeding, they're going to exceed revenue this year.
So we felt confident those salary savings would actually be reflected in terms of revenue deposited for services that D6 Treatment's provided. The amount that we're asking to move from that salary savings from vacant positions is about $24,000. And that would both make the line item correct in our B budget and would also allow Ashley to pursue some case management services. And Ashley wanted to talk to the Commission, both about the request in general and also the intent of adding on a case management contract.
So one of the things that we've been looking at and for our program and discussing with the other, with the judges, is case management. It would be an important part of the program as far as people being incarcerated and being put, you know, being placed back into the community, is being able to have somebody help them with resources and finding housing, employment, get connected to the community resources as far as AA meetings, things like that. And so we've recently had an intern with ISU provide, well, they came in and did an internship with us this spring and is really interested in a position with us as a contract worker as they get their license. And so we would like to request a contract position for a case manager as long as it matches our budget. And we've been working with Christie on how we can monitor that every week to make sure that we stay within the contracted budget. So...
So there's no penalty for taking this intern as a full-time employee?
Wouldn't be full-time, so.
Previous discussion.
No penalty, no.
And we talked about this when Ashley brought the first contract to the Commission, that we would have to watch the funds and see where we were going to be at and that this might be a possibility. Now it is.
And so to move from A to B?
Yes. $24,000.
$24,000.
I'll get the letter put together and have Ashley, well, actually have Jason sign it, sorry, have Jason sign it, and then we'll do a formal resolution.
Okay. Do you have any concerns?
No, sounds like a good plan.
Ashley, I have a question. Is your intern currently one of our...
No, this is a bachelor's level. And so they just did a internship with us through ISU. So they're under the contract of the school. So they're actually not with us anymore as school.
Okay, so they're a school employee.
Yeah, so they did just a pure internship with us. It was not a master's level intern. So they actually won't be able to work with us until they get their license, and she is taking her licensing exam this week. And so we wouldn't even bring her on until we have officially seen her license, so no.
That's good.
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and move forward with that, and then we'll do the formal vote resolution.
So you don't need a motion?
Not, not at this point.
Okay.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we're doing a five-minute...